I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wagley. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Conklin.
Here.
Mr. Canwisheer.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
And Mrs. Duckman.
Here. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Move the board approve that agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that tonight's agenda is approved as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to all our guests this evening. It's great to see a lot of you out there. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? All right. I won't go through all that other stuff then. Moving on to board members and the board table. Ms. Zinn, did you have anything this evening?
No, this evening, no.
All right. And Director Wheeler?
I just wanted to say that for everyone involved in the homecoming activities this week, thank you. Day one at Riverdale Heights, I know the feedback from my daughter was that they were really fun and they love participating and the high school makes it so fun for everybody to get involved. So I hope everyone has a great homecoming week.
Thank you. Director Ayers?
I would echo Director Wheeler about homecoming as well.
Have a great homecoming weekend, everyone.
Awesome. And Director Smith?
I'll echo their comments on the football game on Friday night.
Yes, big game Friday night. Sounds good. Director Canwisheer?
Two things. First, thanks Debbie for managing the election paperwork and everything and being handy for questions. Appreciate that. The second thing is something I hoped I wouldn't ever have to do, but I had a number of constituents contact me about a situation that occurred on Friday with a male teacher allegedly aggressively verbalizing something to a student that could easily be construed as bullying. My understanding is that's been handed off to the principal of the high school. I don't know what the current state of it is, but I do hope the administration addresses that in an even-handed way regardless of the status of that employee if allegations are proved, proven true. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cullings, Matt?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Damon?
You'll find an updated personnel agenda and updated RFP and updated, I think, updates to certain 300 policies.
And Mr. Struse, did you have anything this evening?
Just a few things. First of all, Lee, Jill, and Bernie are not here this evening. They are actually in Minnesota at a Marzano conference. They're working on some things for our year three of our five-year plan. We're in year two this year, so they're getting some pre-learning for next year to help us keep moving forward with our five-year plan around instruction and improving instructions. So that is where they are tonight. A couple of things, just reminder that student hunger drive is kicking off and our kids always do a phenomenal job with that to help members of our community who are deprived. So watch for that. I'm sure our kids will be coming around probably doing their trick-or-treat for cans. So save everything you have so you're ready for them when they come by. Also, I've had a chance this last two weeks, thanks to Debbie, makes my arrangements for me every year, by going around and visiting with every single of our new teachers, having a sit-down conversation with them about their transition and how we're supporting them and what that looks like. And this last year, if you recall, we only had of our new teachers, we hired, five of them were actually, or six more, brand, brand-new teachers into education. The rest were experienced teachers and it's been really fun enjoying listening to them and their experience transitioning from whatever they came from to ours and how well they feel supported, whether it's from our instructional coaches, from their PLC or their colleagues, administration, and just really thankful for what that is. And it's been fun listening to them and we'll continue on with that process and we'll do it again in the spring. So always enjoyable. And with that, with Bernie not being here, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Holly to introduce our seven National Merit Scholar semifinalists for this year. I'll let him do the honors there.
Thank you.
I like how he takes some of my thunder away. So to give you a little bit of update, National Merit Scholar Program, annual academic competition, it's open to all U.S. high school students who meet participation requirements. What are those? You've got to be a high schooler, take the PSAT no later than your junior year, and attend high school in the USA. So of all the students who do that, less than 1% of the nation's high school seniors qualify as semifinalists, of which we have seven. It seems like there's a lot. And then you look at the little book that I get and it's like this, and that's the whole country. It's an amazing thing. We have seven, as we were told, semifinalists this year, and we're all very proud of them. So at this time, I'd like to invite our scholars to stand up, introduce themselves, introduce who's with them. John, over here.
I'm Cooper Breeze, and this is my dad, Andrew, and my mom Tara.
I'm Tarver, I'm the tape. This is my mom, Samantha.
I'm Isabella Sales. This is my mom Lauren and my dad Nathan.
I'm Alex Darsen. This is my mom Jordan.
This is me, a bag. Unfortunately, I'm not good with my parents. But that's my mom, yeah, that's my dad. That's my mom.
I'm Lauren Black, and this is my mom Wendy and my dad Chris.
I'm JJ Garcia, and this is my mom Rosa and my sister Cecilia.
All right. And there's your class. It's a national seminar.
So juniors, correct? For the most part, or seniors?
Seniors.
Seniors this year. Do any of you have, I did see, was it Heather, did you put together the questions, you asked them?
Yes.
Which was pretty amazing. Do any of you want to share what your future aspirations might be or what you'd like to do so that the board knows what you might want to do? You may not know where you're headed yet for college, but ideas.
Eventually, I want to be a physician. So I think I'm probably headed to the University of Iowa to major in biomedical engineering, pre-med track.
Just keep going around.
I'm probably going to major in electrical engineering. Likely, I will stay, go onto IT.
Hopefully something business-related as well as spending some time abroad.
I'll probably also do some sort of electrical engineering for this. And maybe I will stay with the department.
I'm hoping to get a C C seven degree from undergrad and then law.
I'm looking to major in industrial design, but the end goal is to be a pilot.
I'm going to major in neuroscience.
Board members, any questions for them?
How many of you took multiple classes to prep for your exam? I know many people take one class. Anybody taking more than one class?
What class was the highlight of your time at PV High School that you would recommend incoming freshmen coming to the high school? You had to pick one with difficulty.
I really enjoyed AP Physics One and then honors Biology also.
I also really enjoyed AP Physics One. That was really interesting.
I went to some of the Spanish classes, so AP Spanish has been really fun.
Keep our biases.
I think doing AP, I learned the most math. I think it's AP Physics as well.
I'm going to have to echo her, but I really enjoyed AP Spanish this year. I also think our English is pretty awesome.
My favorite class was because I really liked the teacher that I had because he made math a lot easier.
I liked AP Lang, Dr. Lombard, because I think you learn a lot of things that you can apply to the real world and not just books.
It was very nice that Heather put together the information on all of you. That limits our questions for you tonight. We feel like we know a lot about you and that was very insightful. We appreciate you taking the time to answer those questions. Yes, Mr. Holly?
I just want to finish off by saying, when I see these numbers, and this is my third year here, and I talked to Mr. Struse about, I had been at schools that had some successful schools, year after year after year, I've seen this school do so well and produce such high-quality students that I think the board needs to know that it is, you get to see it come in once a day, but day after day after day, people are working really, really hard. Students and teachers.
You take Catherine's question, it was a very good question, and as I read through all your information you shared, I think the one that stood out, Alex, I think you mentioned about how elementary was a place where you remember great things. And that was really kind of cool to see a student finally mention elementary as a place of memory because that truly shows it is a K-12 approach, PK through 12 approach to what we do in Pleasant Valley. So great shout-out there for what you said. But again, just all of you mentioned great classes you took, teachers who have an impact on you, and we hope that it happens every single day. And I think students, as we look at you and what you've accomplished, this is just the very, very beginning of hopefully great things in your future and what you can do. And parents, we're just proud of you for the support you've given your children and the importance of education you've put on them to make sure that they realize that this is a one step moving into their future. So thank you for supporting your kids every single day. And kids, make sure when you leave today, you thank your parents as well.
Absolutely. Great. And thank you all for coming tonight and parents as well, showing your support again. Did you have anything else this evening, Mr. Struse?
No, I do not. That was all I had.
I just have one thing this evening. Usually when we have a longtime PV person retire, Mr. Struse says a little bit about them. And in our consent agenda tonight, there is the announcement of Mr. Struse's retirement that we have to approve. And I just want to say that we really appreciate you and all you've done for our district, the teachers you've worked with, the students you've worked with for over 30 years in our district. You started, let's see here, you've started as a eighth-grade math teacher and coach, a high school math teacher and coach, a junior high math teacher and coach, junior high dean of students. You also were middle school, middle-level principal of the year in 2009, high school associate principal, athletic director, junior high principal, assistant superintendent as well as superintendent. So since 2019, Brian has led our district through some pretty tough years. We talked him into being superintendent and then COVID came along. So jokes on him, no. So we just really appreciate all you've done for our district, all the lives you've touched. You've touched a lot of students' lives. You know this district inside and out. Over those 30 years, you've raised two daughters who have gone through Pleasant Valley and have been very successful. Your wife Karen has been a great support over those years. And I was lucky enough to be newer to the board when we hired Mr. Struse as our superintendent. And I think we did like 12 or 13 sessions where we met with different groups, teachers, administrators, community members, students, staff, custodians, whoever. We met with a lot of groups because we felt like as an assistant superintendent, we had a great, we had a great person candidate right here among us. And I will never forget that we had more people that came to advocate for Mr. Struse to be our next superintendent. And the words that we heard over and over again was, he's an excellent collaborator. He's an amazing team player. He's an amazing listener. We heard listener over and over. And if you know Brian and you've heard him talk about anything, you know that what's best for students is what is at his heart. So I just wanted to be able to say that tonight, Brian. We have a lot of work to do until June. So I'm just, I'm just kind of, but since we have to approve this tonight, I just wanted to recognize that we don't take this lightly and that we appreciate everything you've done over the years and you will be greatly missed. So thank you again. We will move on with the meeting. But I wanted everyone to stay around to hear that because we will talk more about, more about next steps on our superintendent search towards the end of the meeting, but I wanted everyone to be here for that. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Molly.
So moving on to our consent agenda tonight, which includes minutes, personnel, open enrollment, yeah, and open enrollment. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If no questions, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve that consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwisheer to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move on to approval of bills. General fund.
I'm that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $330,950.36 in payment of invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Director Conklin, second by Director Wheeler, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions?
I had one question on this one. So there was the abatement, I believe it might have been Cody that was listed on there. It was like $48 or $4900. On that, was that for like the removal of like what was up in the ceiling and stuff?
That's exactly what it was. In that one.
Kind of what I assumed, but I just saw that and that caught my eye.
Yeah, from IITI. Yes, correct.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $101,276.11 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary, junior, high activity fund.
I move that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $2,445.59 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High school activity fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $53,611.16 in payment of invoice presented.
Second. Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital. Capital Projects Fund.
I move the Capital Projects Fund's warrants be issued in the total amount of one million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Director Canwischer, second by Director Wheeler, that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move that Pebble Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debt Service Fund.
I move that Debt Service Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second. Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that Debt Service Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund Warrants.
I move the Internal Service Fund Warrants sixty-six, sixty-eight to sixty-six, seventy, and ACH thirty-three, twelve through thirty-three, fifteen, be issued in the total amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand and twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkel, second by Director Smith, that Internal Service Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices that are presented. All in favor, say, or I'm sorry, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Trust Fund.
I move that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We will move on to, no old business this evening, we will move on to new business. And we have Principal Jason Jones here to talk to us about that.
I would just like to mention quick that today was, uh, grout fit day for homecoming. And it looks like our two principals this evening participated pretty well. All great, grout fit.
Did not know. Recognize the metal. Well done, you two.
Recognize it.
They called each other. Well, that's the model. Oh, okay.
I, I did, I did tell Mr. Holly to even, his hair even. Jones, I'm, I'm sorry, but you're, you're also fit today's theme.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, so, thank you for having me here tonight, um, here to talk about, um, our Advanced Placement results from the two thousand twenty-five, uh, tests. I think this really, uh, fits into our shared vision of having the finest curriculum or academic programs in the state. Some of the things that we do, we don't always get to quantify and see the results. But Advanced Placement is one of those areas, uh, that we do get to quantify those results. And for those that don't know, uh, Advanced Placement is a college board program, uh, to offer courses and exam, college courses and exam to high school students. So, for us, our goals, since I've been at Pleasant Valley High School and moved into my role, has been for Advanced Placement to increase the access and participation from our students and to improve the achievement, not for some, but for every student who takes advancement, Advanced Placement courses. And so, um, here to celebrate a lot of the achievements by our students from last school year. Uh, the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year saw a record number of students, uh, five hundred and nineteen students, um, took an AP course, um, and exam. And then that also, that record number of participation has also led us to our highest level of achievement that we have ever had. And so, um, pretty amazing to say we keep growing the programs and they keep doing better. And really a testament, uh, to our teachers, to our students, and to you for the support that you provide. The summary of accomplishments below there, our students took AP exams in twenty-eight different areas. And this is really, uh, an amazing statistic to me. You conferred diplomas, uh, to our, our graduating class last, um, last year, and forty percent of those who received that diploma had taken an AP course and an AP exam while they were at Pleasant Valley High School. I think that's pretty, pretty remarkable about how many students are accessing, uh, this high level curriculum. The average score, uh, which was a record for us, um, the AP, uh, exam is scored from one to five, most being a three, success or passing an AP exam. Um, it depends on the institution, um, there's a lot of other criteria, but generally speaking, a three or higher is passing the exam. Our number of students, the eighteen, eight hundred and thirteen exams averaged a three point nine score. So, almost a four, which is just incredible. Almost every testing area that we had in those twenty-eight were above the state and global average. You can see the number of AP students, number of AP exams, um, in the chart below. I just included from last year to this year, just so you can see, um, the increase in those numbers. But I also thought it was important to show you just within five years, what have we done with our AP programs? And so, just to compare it, um, to the two thousand twenty-one tests, um, I think is really kind of staggering to see. The chart below that are the number of exams that were scored at that level. Again, five, four, three, two, or one. So, where do you come in as, as our board? You have supported our teachers and our administration through the course approvals that we've done and we've asked for, for different courses just recently. And I want to talk about one of those in particular. Um, you also support our teachers, um, they take this very seriously. They, um, access professional development whenever they can. The summer institutes are an important part of preparing, um, the, the AP teachers uh, for teaching and preparing the students for the exam, for the curriculum. Um, so, we appreciate that support. With the amount of AP exams, eight hundred and thirteen, uh, we have a counselor, Ellie Curtis, who is in charge of orchestrating all of the exam taking, and it's a tremendous, um, uh, job for her. So, I really can't thank her enough for the amount of work and time that she puts in, and a lot of people support that, um, but she helps lead that. And then the teachers for all the work they put in. Uh, I'll just tell you, for example, chemistry, I was, uh, the AP chemistry teacher. I was talking to her over the summer, usually have the, the conversations about the results and celebrate and start to analyze the results. And just so you're aware, eighteen of the twenty-one students who took that exam scored a four or five. But in our conversation, she was already looking at what are things she wants to change? Because these were areas that could be strengthened. So, an amazing reflection, um, and commitment to excellence, um, I would say by our teachers. And that's one of the advantages of AP exams is you get that feedback. You can see exactly what are the areas of strength for your students and then where are some of the areas of opportunity for growth. So, thank you to our teachers for all the work that they put in. One of the newer AP courses, I just wanted to share with you that you approved was AP Precálculus. This last year, we had se- sixty-seven exams. Sixty-five out of the sixty-seven scored a four or a five, which is, it was over a point over the average in the state and globally. So, just remarkable. Uh, another highlight, there are so many highlights that I could pick up, um, pick out, but, uh, AP Human Geography has the most exams, a hundred and eighty-seven exams that are, our freshmen and our sophomores mostly are taking that course. So, to have freshmen be able to access that college level material right when they step onto our campus is, is really important. And credit to the Social Studies Department for opening that up, not having gatekeeping or barriers for students to access that if they have a passion for social studies and for, for human geography, that they can take the class. And with that hundred and eighty-seven, seventy percent of them scored a four or five. So, just, just remarkable. Um, you can see the breakdown. I wanted to compare the scores to, a little bit to last year even. So, our fours and fives, um, we went, last year, about sixty-four percent of our s- our exams were at the four or five level. This year, we went up to seventy-one percent. And then you can just see where did that growth come from? I think a lot of it were the threes. We had two hundred and seventeen threes last year. This year, we, or this last year, we only had under seventy-one. So, we're moving, we moved a lot of those into the fours and the fives. Same with the twos and the ones, uh, both of those saw significant decreases. The ones, for example, we had nineteen a year ago. We only had four students who scored a one, uh, on the AP exam. So, just a lot to celebrate. I know it's a lot of data and information, so I would welcome any questions you guys have about, about the data.
So, my, I'll start with a comment. I think the district's done pretty well in helping out our students who are interested in the trades and hands-on work at high school. And this is great evidence that we continue to make strides in embracing those students who want to move on to college and providing them the tools necessary. Um, I, you know, eighteen percent increase in the number of students taking the exam and eighteen percent increase in the number of exams taken is quite impressive. Along those lines, how many new classes, not sections, but like how many new classes of AP did we add? Might explain some of that increase.
Uh, well, I would say, um, some of the big, so sixty-seven students were added because of the AP Precalc, for example. That was a, a large increase. In my time, this is my eighth year at the high school, we've added AP Earth Science. Uh, we've added, uh, AP Chemistry, um, AP Human Geography, the one that has the most students, went from a semester course that, that saw usually about one section to now a full year course that, I think we have nine sections this year. So, those are just some of the highlights of the, the courses that we've added.
So, that would mean you added twelve students without regard to the new course to taking AP exams, which again is, I think, quite impressive. So, very well done, thank you.
Yeah. I think it was neat to hear some of the, our merit scholars to mention some of the AP courses as some of their favorites.
Especially physics, I was told that's the hardest course in the high school curriculum, so.
I think it's also important to note, you know, the student who said AAT was, was so valuable, it's, it's the work that's done in the, in the, in the building classes to that that gets these students there. And so, it, the work that's happening in the building is fantastic. From ninth grade on, and really, I believe before that, I don't mean to, since we're talking about the high school, it's fascinating, so every child's path leads them to this.
Yeah, it's, what's really neat to listen to tonight is you think about the history of where we've been last, say, fifteen years. Because we never wanted to be a district that just focused on AP testing alone, exactly to your point. So, we mean, we, our concurrent enrollment numbers are still off the charts. There are kids who are taking the manufacturing classes. I mean, our CT program is, our robotics is just huge. So, it's all about how do we diversify the classes we're offering and kids want to take them. And when you see this, it was also, if we had kids taking AP, we wanted them taking the test as well, because they don't have to take the test. But it's like, if, that's the outcome, to see how they can do it. I think about like the C, the CLO by literacy, the number of kids that take that exam when they don't have to do that, it just again shows our kids are looking for a very well-rounded education, thanks to our ministers and our teachers who are promoting this. And this is just fun data to see about the impact that our kids are, our teachers are having on our kids.
So, what would you attribute, uh, such an increase to? Is it, are the counselors talking to students more like when they're doing their class planning? Or, I mean, it's just, it's, it's amazing. I mean, what, what do you feel is, um, the driving factor or factors that?
With the, with the increase in participation? Is that kind of what you're asking? I would, it's, it's a multifaceted, I would say, kind of success build on success. And so, as we have added different courses or changed, um, courses or laid out pathways within a department, um, there may be clearer. When students start having success in those, students talk to one another. I, I really enjoyed this, or I get, I, I scored a four on this AP. So, then all of a sudden, I think that helps. So, I, I really think it's the amount of offerings we've, we've been able to include. I think it's been our teachers' work to help ensure that students are successful when they take those AP courses. And I think the word of mouth has, has helped that as well.
I remember the conversation we had about AP Human Geography, we were like, originally it's like, well, do we really think ninth graders can do it? I think it's going to be too tough for them. And the way it's rolled out, it's, I mean, you raise the expectations for kids, they'll step up. And that's a good example. And there, the number of kids taking that class as freshmen and sophomore is fun to see.
And then what is built on, so that we have just huge numbers there now. And then that means more students are willing to take or want to take AP US History their sophomore year. And then AP Government and then Econ. Um, and so, we've, and we added a, AP Macro Econ recently too, that, that has. It was every other year now we're doing that. So, um, I think it's just, I think it's been absolutely a team approach on what are the areas we can grow and what are the courses that students are interested in? And then ensuring that they're successful.
Thank you so much for all your efforts. And I really think it's cool that students are promoting it, you know, to each other as well. So, that's, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, and with that, we are going to move on to, um, the SBRC request for modified, modified supplemental, uh, aid. Mr. Langman.
All right, uh, the next couple of items on the agenda are items that we normally do at approximately this board meeting at the time of the year, each year. Um, so, they're pretty routine items that we handle at this board meeting. The first one is the SBRC, which SBRC in this case stands again for School Budget Review Committee. It's a request to them for modified supplemental amount and supplemental aid for the amount of our two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year special education deficit. As a reminder, prob- I believe about seventy or seventy-five percent at least districts in the state do run a deficit in special education. One thing to remember is, if it's in a student's IEP, for example, to get a piece of equipment, school districts cannot say, oh, we, we can't afford that. It has to be bought if it's in a student's IEP. That's just, you know, one example of, um, a case that adds to the likelihood of a school district having a deficit in special education. Two of the main factors in whether a district has a special education deficit or, or what changes the amount of a special education's deficit is, one of them is Medicaid billing. And there's a document that Heather has up on the screen here. I don't know if you can make that any larger or not, um.
It's also in our board.
Yeah, it's in the board packet too, but it shows a history of how much our special ed deficit has been all the way back to the nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven fiscal year. And then you can see on this document, we started doing Medicaid billing in the two thousand five, two thousand six fiscal year. The first three years that we did Medicaid billing, we had an outside company called Leader Services that actually, um, helped us with, um, submitting the Medicaid billing to the state. And then starting in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine fiscal year, we brought it in-house. Molly, Molly Muller from our Technology Department has been heavily involved in the past in the Medicaid billing. Uh, Lisa Paper, who was in our Accounts Payable Department for several years, was also heavily involved with Medicaid billing. And then, of course, the last few years, um, we've had Dawn Tagg on be the main person here in our Belma office who handles the Medicaid billing. Um, Jill Kenyon, of course, oversees that also. But you can see the history in the far, well, the, on the far left. You can see the history in the far, well, the, on the far left columns on this page, Medicaid reimbursement revenue. You can see it was pretty steadily growing all the way up through the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. And we brought in just under a million dollars in Medicaid revenue. Now, the last couple of fiscal years, you can see there's been a fairly big dip in the amount of Medicaid revenue that we've been billing for. And, um, some of that has to do with its transportation related. And if Jill was here, she could probably help explain this better. Or Brian, if you wanna hop in with your understanding of it. But my understanding is it has become more difficult, or had become more difficult the last couple of years. To bill for transportation-related services that are provided to a student who is Medicaid eligible. Um, so that, that is one of the big reasons for the last couple of years that our deficit hit. Not, not deficit, that our amount billed for Medicaid has gone down. My understanding from talking to Dawn the other day is for the current fiscal year, the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. The amount we should be able to bill for transportation should go back up again because of some changes that were made. Related to, um, putting stuff in a student's IEP that will make it more. More easy to bill for transportation services.
Yeah, the biggest thing we have to now put in there is if as soon as we build for special ed and transportation, you have to state the reason why. So what is the reason for the support? As long as you have the reason why stated in there, it could be billed and reimbursed through Medicaid.
I know another thing that Dawn did mention to me the other day is we do have. Some situations where we have students who are Medicaid eligible. But their parents are not giving consent to bill for Medicaid. Because of concerns of possibly the, some sort of tracking being done on their students. My understanding. Um, so, so that, that also would, um, lower the amount of students that we are billing for Medicaid, even though they're eligible for Medicaid.
And the other thing that we're doing now is you have to have parents, uh, give the permission to be able to collect Medicaid. The state will go through and they'll give you a list of students. We're also going through and getting some pre-approval from parents so that when we have the pre-approval, you can start billing. Or you can always actually bill back a year for services. So we're working on some of that pre-approval ahead of time. So we don't have to wait for the list from the state to come back to us too. So that's another thing we're trying to do. To increase that number back to where it was.
So the amounts that we do bill for Medicaid, they actually have the effect of decreasing our special education deficit. Because that's revenue coming in that, um, decreases our special education deficit. So you can see if you added the amount of our Medicaid billing, for example, for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Which was about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the ending deficit of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand and some dollars. We would have had a deficit of about two point one million dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year if we hadn't done any Medicaid billing. The other thing, big thing that affects, um, the amount of the special education deficit, of course, is how many students we're serving. And that number has pretty continuously gone up from year to year. If you look at the far right columns for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. We served four more Level One students at count day. Ten more Levels Two students at count day and one more Level Three student at count day for special ed. So that, of course, has the effect of increasing the amount of the special education deficit. So again, um, as of the end of this last fiscal year, we're looking at a deficit of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen. Nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. So what we're asking the board to do tonight is the state does allow us to make that request to the School Budget Review Committee. Committee to get what's called Modified Supplemental Amount, which is basically additional spending authority in our general fund. That we are allowed to get to help uncover the cost, basically, of the special ed deficit. So that's the first part of the motion tonight. The second part of the motion is, as I said, there's about seventy percent or so of the districts in the state that run a special education deficit. But then there's about thirty percent or so of the districts in the state that have a surplus in special ed. So we also would be as part of the second part of this motion tonight. Um, making a request to the SBRC to get what's called supplemental, um, supplemental aid for the special ed deficit. Um, and what that is, is where the state goes in and they basically divide up all the districts that had a surplus in special ed. And they pay that money out to the districts that had a deficit in special ed during the year. So like during this last twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, I think we got about thirteen thousand dollars or so in supplemental aid. Because of being one of those districts that had a special ed deficit. The general rule of thumb in Iowa school finance is you never turn down a spent, a chance to get additional spending authority. So that is why we are recommending that the board would approve this tonight, so.
So the special education services that our district provides to private schools. Is that in these numbers? So basically some of this deficit is a result of private schools and we're just trying to claw that money back from the state?
Yes. I mean, so we do get a, if there's a student in a, uh, private school. We do provide services there, so that's part of it. And then we would get some of that money back in terms of what that weighting is above the full. So we get that, but yeah, it would be all part of this whole thing.
Okay. And the other thing is, yeah, so eleven years ago, I mean, some of the explanations are interesting. It only happened in the last two cycles. So the question, of course, is what did the state do in the last two cycles? Because I presume we didn't change how we did reporting.
You talking about the transportation?
We're gonna drop on.
General drop?
Twenty percent last calendar, last school year, right? The same year, incidentally, that the voucher program passed.
That'd be a really good question to follow up with Dawn on to get that as to why that's changed. A lot of it was under transportation. There was some change in, in the rules that made it more difficult. So we can get, we'll get a clarified, clear answer for that.
Stuff in advance or do we find out only after we've submitted everything? Or do you not know?
I don't wanna say I know in that way.
I'll follow up with her.
I think, I think some of it was in advance, but yeah, again, Dawn would be.
And, and the other observation is there's just a lot more Level Threes than there were eleven years ago.
Right.
Less than half the amount. It's crazy considering inflation and all those other factors. So it's just, and I assume the deficit is our general fund, so it hits everybody.
This is one of those where sometimes you look at from a legislative standpoint, asking them to raise the weighting on special education. Because clearly, I mean, again, seventy percent are over that. And like you said, you get a Level Three student, the amount of money we may receive for that does not cover what the support is that's needed, which. Wouldn't understand. It just creates a deficit that you have to figure out how you solve.
So these numbers that are shown on here, uh, those students may attend private schools in our area, but we still provide the services.
So good. Yeah. So right, right now, we have, uh, fourteen students. I know at, uh, for this school year that we are providing services to. That we have a teacher that goes there basically from eight to one. That they're there and they come back to Pleasantview and finish their day with us there. But yes.
But that wasn't, that's just this year. In previous years, it wasn't or there were?
No. So I'll give a great, great example. Just put it in straight terms. So like when Lord's was in Bettendorf School District, Bettendorf Schools supported them. Now that St. Joan of Arc is open in our district, we have fourteen students there who are receiving services. So we have a teacher there that's supporting that.
That'll impact this coming year, but not.
Right. Not, yeah. Yes. That'd be a good point. Yes. Not in these numbers directly, but in the future they would be. Yes. Yes. Good clarification.
Any other questions for Mike? I will take a motion.
I move that the board has a request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC. For Modified Supplemental Amount and the amount of the district's final twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five special education deficit. Of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. For the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review. And a request for supplemental aid based on the amount of the district's final twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five special education deficit. Of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. For the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers. That the board authorize a request to the School Budget Review Committee. Modified supplemental amount in the amount of the district's final twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five special education deficit. Of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. Or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review. And a request for supplemental aid based on the amount of the district's final twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five special education deficit. Of one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents. Or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
I'm gonna continue.
All right. Similar to special education, the state also allows us to make a request to the School Budget Review Committee for Modified Supplemental Amount. For the excess LEP, which stands for Limited English Proficiency Cost for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Again, special, similar to special ed, the amount of revenue that we get for LEP students is not enough to cover. All of the costs related to LEP students, and that's pretty consistent from year to year also. Um, so the amount of our deficit for Limited English Proficiency Program for this year. Is, this last fiscal year is two hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. So again, we don't recommend turning down a chance to get the spending authority to cover that. So I'd take any questions if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, we just need, um, motions similar to the one that we did for the special ed deficit. And the reason we always put in there, or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review is because. There was one year, a few years ago, when the state was reviewing the CAR and the special ed supplement reports. And I think they had actually made a mistake. It was not our mistake, it was their mistake. But that changed the amount of our special ed deficit. And so by putting this wording that they recommended in the motion. That would make us not have to bring it back to another board meeting if something like that happened. In case you were wondering why that wording is in there.
All right.
That makes the motion even longer.
All right. Any questions for Mike? And I'll take a motion.
I move that the board authorize a request to the School Budget Review Committee for Modified Supplemental. Amount for excess LEP cost for serving English language learners in a limited English instructional program. During the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. Or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that the board authorize a request to the School Budget Review Committee for Modified Supplemental Amount. For excess LEP cost for serving English language learners in a limited English instructional program. During the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. Or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Transfer of funds, Iowa Code Section two ninety-eight point two.
All right. The last two items again were normal things that we do each year. But this is something new that the district has not ever, um, utilized before. A few years ago, the Iowa Legislature passed Iowa Code Section two ninety-eight point, two ninety-eight A point two. Which allows school districts in Iowa to transfer money from one categorical source of funding. Into what's called a flexibility account in the general fund. And so what we are recommending tonight to the board is we have a surplus in our, um, that we carry over. From year to year in our homeschool assistance program categorical funding. At the end of the two, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, that surplus is just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so that we have. In the homeschool assistance program categorical funding. What we are recommending that we would do is pass this, um, resolution tonight. To transfer a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that carryover that we have in the homeschool assistance program. And put it into this flexibility account in the general fund. Which we would then use to help offset the deficit that we do run each year in our at-risk and dropout prevention program. We've talked for numerous years now about how we are limited to two point six percent of our general fund budget. For what we can, um, get in funding for the at-risk and dropout prevention program. That doesn't even come close to covering all of our costs that we have in at-risk and dropout prevention. As you know, there's been talk for several years at the state about, um, some sort of phase in where. The two point six percent could be raised up to eventually be the maximum five percent that many of the districts, or. Quite a few districts anyway in the state are at, but there hasn't been any progress on that yet. So we, Ryan and Lori Wakelin, who works in the business office and myself, were looking at this and. Noticed that, you know, surplus in the homeschool assistance program. And thought it would be, make some sense to make this transfer. And for the first time, take advantage of this flexibility account in the general fund. So that's what this agenda item is, um, asking us to make a motion on. It's transferring a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the surplus in homeschool assistance funding into the flexibility account. One other thing to note is in the homeschool assistance program. Each year when we, um, filed a certified annual report to the state. Lori Wakelin, she has a bunch of questions that she gets from the state that she has to answer related to the. For example, to those carryover balances on the categorical funding. And one of the questions she has to a, or gets asked and has to answer is, um, why in this example. Why is your homeschool assistance program carryover more than twenty-five percent of, um, the cost that you have in the spec. In the homeschool assistance program funding? So by making this transfer of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of the homeschool assistance program funding. It would bring us down closer to that twenty-five percent that the state appears to be thinking is. A reasonable amount to keep in homeschool assistance program. So that's how we came up with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the amount of the transfer. So things would still be safe as far as the balance in the homeschool assistance program, even after this transfer.
And maybe not get that question.
Yeah. So going with Mike Tupper, there's four areas. One is the statewide voluntary preschool. That is a flexible one. Where if you had an extra money there, you could transition it, which we never do. Our count is maybe twenty thousand dollars carryover there on a yearly basis. It's not very high. Professional development is another one. We don't have a lot of carryover on. Homeschool assistance and then teacher leadership compensation, TLS, TLC that we have. That one's always very easy to answer because we may create a surplus there. And the reason we do is if we're looking to add a position, we know then that's gonna be spent down within two or three years when we add that position from ongoing into perpetuity. So that's easy to answer. You might ask, why do we have a surplus this now in homeschool assistance like we do? And why we're transitioning it? It all goes back to really twenty, 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 twenty-one. When we went from sixty-six to a hundred and twenty-six students in homeschool. So we jumped by fifty kids. And then we were about a hundred and five, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and nineteen. Then now we're back down to seventy-nine. And what happens is you see two things. Number one, you're always your, based upon the budget from the year before. So when we had that huge jump, we just never, we had the extra money that we weren't spending. And we're seeing less people who are also using the AEA services for homeschool assistance. And so the money we received from the state, we just weren't able to spend it to like what the needs were. And so that is why we said, let's go ahead and remove this and transition because of the flexibility account that Mike was talking about. So that's really what drove it, was the high influx of students and then not taking the services from the AEA necessarily, um, during that last time. So we feel very comfortable with the number we have, the amount of money we receive from the state. And then still having that twenty-five percent that we will be okay, uh, moving forward.
Any questions? And I'll take a motion.
I move that the board tran, authorizes the transfer of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. On the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal prod, fiscal year project one-one-one-three. Homeschool assistance program to the flexibility account project three-one-seven-three. From the twenty twenty four, twenty five fiscal prod- fiscal year project one one, one three homeschool assistance program to the flexibility account project three one, seven, three. Within the general fund to be expended for the purpose of at-risk dropout prevention programming under Iowa Code Section two fifty seven point four zero.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Ayers, that the board authorize the transfer of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. From the twenty twenty four, twenty five fiscal year project one one, one three homeschool assistance program. To the flexible account project three one, seven, three, within the general fund to be expended for the purpose of at-risk dropout prevention program. Under Iowa Code Section two fifty seven point four zero. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
For all the work on, on all three of those items.
Sure.
Okay, moving along to board policy revisions, series three hundred.
So before I turn over to Leanne, just a couple of things, remember, we've gone through the one hundred and two hundred series uh back in June, July. And now we're looking at the three hundred series, um so when you look in your board packet. Leanne has put together all the policies that we have in the entire three hundred series in that order. And then as Doug had mentioned last time, it's just, if you see something that's being changed, it's in red or it's blue. So the corrected versions, one's not behind it, you just know that that'll be either gone or be added to it. Moving forward, and then Leanne has put in here the reasons why these are being changed or what we're looking at for some splits. Um, so she can kind of go through that with you, but really tonight again, remember, it's a brand new, first time reviewed tonight, so first one, anything that's just being reviewed. And no changes tonight, and the next board meeting, any new policies, we'll take three meetings, so that'd be our first one, uh last one in October. That we would bring those to the table at that time, so this, at that time, I would turn over to Leanne to talk about I A S B, some recommendations they have. And why you see the reasons we're having the changes here at this time, then you can ask any questions you may have as well.
Yeah, so before I get into that, I do want to put on record that um I need a correction to the agenda. Um, board, new board policy three hundred is not listed in here as one that has revisions, so that has to have a second reading, it's not just a review. So we do want to change that, um, so going through uh on your agenda, it has listed out um whether or not these are. A new board policy or revised, and revised means either this is policy primer from I A S B. So it has an update based on a law, a regulation, something has changed and now we have to update our policies because of it. Um, which is three oh two oh one and three oh three oh two. The others that you see that have revisions is where I A S B comes in and makes recommendations. On, on a regular basis about our policies, and so what they've done is they've taken our board policy. Three oh one point two and split it into four separate policies. So if you see our first one, which is three oh two oh two, you'll see a lot of language stricken out of that, and that's because it's now in a new policy number. So three oh two point two, oh three, oh seven, and oh eight used to be one board policy for us, it's now just divided up into four separate policies. Very similar with three oh three oh three, um they've taken three oh two point three, broke it up into four separate policies, and then three oh four oh one. Was our previous three oh three point one that is now two different policies. They don't really give a lot of um intent behind these splits, I, I don't know if it's ease of use, easier reading. Um, or, or what, but it, it's just what they have recommended, and so that's kind of the philosophy that we follow, is their recommendations when it comes to updates to board policies. The only other thing that I would note is, we do have six new board policies, but they're not policies, they're exhibits. Um, and so these don't need board approval, these are what I call supplemental or appendix documents. So it's more to support the board policy than it is an actual board policy, but they are new for us. Um, we did not have the director positions for uh food service, and junior high assistant principal is new for us as well this year. Um, I did look at other districts just to see if I went a little cuckoo and crazy on that. Uh, Davenport has no exhibits under their policy, and Bettendorf has seventeen, so they are similar to us where. Their director of communications, H R, food services, all are in there, and my philosophy behind this is. While I don't have an administrative license, Brian still has responsibility for my evaluation. And so as a director in the district, that should be something that we have in there to support the board policy under our administrators in the district. Um, there are two additional ones that have been requested that are not here this evening, we do need to review those first. So those may come up in the next meeting and need um three reading, but, and that's to satisfy that within this policy. We don't have language to support or define appointments within the district. And so that would give us a board policy and a regulation to say what we can appoint for and what the reasons for it is and what, how the board sees that. So that could be a new policy for us moving forward.
So a little background on that one, Adrian had emailed us earlier about, we had it, it was called um, what was it titled?
It's the uh, if you look at three oh two oh one, superintendent qualifications, recruitment, and appointment.
Yeah, so the appointment really meant like the hiring of somebody is the appointment. So the question that, as we've talked about before, would be, there are times when we believe it might be worthwhile to appoint. Someone to a position for various reasons versus having maybe an interview process. So when Adrian brought that question up about appointment, Leanne clarified the appointment, it's just the hiring, but. Do we want to have a separate policies for if we ever want to appoint someone to an administrative position in our district, what guides that process? So Leanne put together, what you see there is the three oh two point uh oh one, right?
No, so this is, this is the current one where we've actually changed the verbiage from appointment to selection. Because that was very confusing, right, when you think of appointment, it's what we normally talk about where somebody was appointed without interview process. So we've changed that to selection, so it matches our other language for hiring. And then I wrote a board policy and regulation for an appointment that I've sent to Brian to review to see. Do I have it correctly, and then we can bring that back to you guys on the next board meeting for, for your review and approv- approval for a new policy.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And it'll be clear and it'll help with transparency with the employees and the staff.
Yeah.
When that process comes up.
So we'll, we'll send it, we'll bring it, we'll bring it to the next board meeting for you to review that and really put your eyes on to see, does it make sense? Long term, is it best for the district to clarify when those might be, might make the most sense to do that?
On the um supplemental documents, or whatever you called them, the exhibits, thank you. Um, when you looked at the Bettendorf to compare, um, was it similarly structured in terms of the document itself? Like it looked like a job description and there were different sections for like qualifications, essential functions?
So what's very interesting with theirs is it was a hybrid, so it was the listing of one through seventy five things, but then they had job goal. They had qualifications, so it was like a hybrid mix of um versus just having a job description. And when I go back to look at our job postings, we have been using this exhibit, and this does not qualify as a job description for our posting. So I would rather have one document that I use everywhere, and, and that is one thing that has to be updated, corrected, fixed. Reviewed versus multiple documents that have to have touchpoints of updates or different things, so.
And just the, just full transparency, the feedback that I had sent earlier today was that I didn't agree that I thought the full job description needed to be in the formal policy. Because in my past practice, job descriptions were an internal document that you used for posting or external postings, but. It was a living, breathing document that could be updated every time you had the job come open, so you could refresh it if. Job duties changed, if qualification changed, but I mean, at the end of the day, it's my opinion, um. But I like to look at Bettendorfs and just see the difference in the structure of how that posting looks and what that document looks like compared to how you have ours drafted. Because there's a lot of information for that to be public.
Yeah, before we.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with transparency in our job descriptions, it's what we hold them accountable to.
No, I didn't say that.
Oh.
I just, the structure of how you have the document set up is what I'm just curious how different or similar it is to Bettendorfs.
So let me ask a question, so if we have like a full job description in our board policy, and we say that um, you know. We want them to have a certain uh, I'm just trying to look here, if I have. If I can find an example, like uh they need to have experience in this or that.
That's not listed in our exhibits, this is just the job description, this is not qualifications, this is an education. This is solely what they're responsible for on their day to day in that position.
Responsibility.
Their responsibility, it's just laid out in a different.
Pull it up and look on it, she's got a bunch of different sections in there.
Okay.
If you were to go back to like, um currently on our website right now, where we have the three hundred series, it'll list a position, it'll say duties. And it'll have a bunch of bullet points, which in the past, we, every time we did a five-year review, we would go in and look at the duties and then adjust them at that time. Where this is designed to, still it's basically duties, but kind of breaking it out into more specifics. Um, again, still the duties of the job, but it's written differently or designed differently.
And they're on an annual review, um instead of a five-year review. Just, that's a process that I put in place, different than our interview guides, curriculum changes, things change in education, do I need to update interview questions? So having an annual review of job descriptions, interviews, all of these things just gives us a consistent process in place to make updates and changes as we need to. And again, these are exhibits, so this can be changed at any time, this isn't a board approval, so if there is something that happens that we need to change it. We can very easily change it, bring it to the board to look at, but it's not a formal policy within the board's board policies.
So it's not a situation where if we decided that the role was gonna be a little different, we wouldn't have to bring the policy back to the board?
Correct. Only regulations and policies need board approval, exhibits don't. They're like supporting documents is the best way that I A S B presents them, is supporting documents to support the policy. So that would be uh for any of our complaint procedures, we have forms, that's an exhibit, it's an example of the form that we would use. But we can change that form as we need to anytime without having to bring it back to the board.
Could you pull up, if you go to our website, could you, do you know our district policies are listed on the school board? If you could go down to the three oh two point four as an example.
And then which one did you want?
Three oh, in the three hundred series, go to three oh two point four.
And then E one, E two.
If you just start, so like three oh two point four is an example, where it just says administrative duties as an example. And then if you do go to like the three oh two point four, E one, like you're mentioning, Leanne.
Yeah, that, is that the secondary education?
Yeah.
Yep, so you see, can I, it's just. All kind of duties that are listed, and so it's just really a different format of versus just having a long list.
To me, when I looked at it, as the first time looking at it, and I looked at what was sent in the board packet, and then I went and looked at what's on the website today. What struck me was just that this is truly just like a laundry list, right?
Yes.
But it's still pretty general. It's not, it doesn't look like a job description, but what is, is proposed in the new version. The way it's structured looks more like a formal job description, even though it may be missing some parts of a formal job description, just the look and feel of it at first glance. Looks more formal to me, which was what part of my feedback was. Not right or wrong, good or bad, just that's my observation, and do we want that is the question.
I mean, is it somewhere where you just put like a full reference only, you know, subject to change, I, I think this one even has it down at the bottom, just like first glance at it. I mean, I, I don't recall the other ones, whether they had that in there or not. Yeah, the list of duties on my, uh, I don't know if that was, I don't recall if that was in the other ones. It's, it's on there, so I mean, that, that doesn't tie us to anything.
It actually is, it's the last paragraph on the bottom of all of them, it's the same one, I took it straight, I took it from that. So this, this, these um exhibits is this previous list of things put into a formal format. That I can use for job postings, I can use for everything versus um just a list of things. Um, so again, it's, it's a format, it's not necessarily the information that is being provided, it's the same information. It just formats it in a different way that for me is easier to use than one through, some of our, some of our exhibits have seventy five numbered items on there. Our director of operations might have more than that, so how do you take that and put it into a format that is easily readable? Still gives the information we want to support the policy, but knowing that this is really a document that we have to use in H R. For our H R related things within the district, this is a support to the policy, but it's still an H R document that we use on a regular basis.
Take a look at that and see what you think and how compares it again, is this just a, easier for a board document?
I like the format, I agree, I listen to that policy. So I'm happy with that part of it, and I still feel it was a little fine toothed, some feedback on the format, since they're new documents. They need to be highlighted, it was confusing to me that they were not, and other sections were, so I was like, well, what's really new and what's not new? That was a little, uh, because I didn't do what you did, which is go out and look at the old one, I was like, oh, they're all black, these must have just been yanked and put into an exhibit, which is.
So within the agenda, it had this document that identified all new board policies. So I, I could have put this entire thing blue, and I can do that in the future so that you know that, because it's a formatting change, so yeah, it's gonna all. Be new in, in view, because even though what's in the current exhibit is in here, it's all gonna look different because it's not gonna read the same. So I can do that if that's easier. In the board agenda, uh, under E, our recommendations, revisions, arrows, follows. And so then within there, there's.
In the news, obviously, that identifies. In the newsletter, Doug.
Oh.
But I can, if, if we have something like that and it's easier for you guys to not have to look through fifty documents, I can make it blue, that's very easy.
I think that would be helpful.
I can do that.
One thing would be, we, we used to put the whole board policy in red if it was brand new, or you, we could do that, or you just put the. The code number up at the top, identifying that, hey, they make it all red, the whole thing's new too, versus trying to read it in red, I don't know which one's easier.
Yeah, I'd rather have just the code on top highlighted red.
Or put across the top, new policy or something, so it's clearly identified.
Yeah.
Consistency.
Yeah, and I think it's helpful to know if you're changing something for the sake of changing it. If we're changing it because there's new I A S B terminology that we're trying to stay consistent with. If we're changing it because we want it to be consistent in another practice, like you said with the, you know, using it in H R in different ways. Um, I think it, it helps me especially be able to take a critical eye, what am I looking at, why are we changing it, are we changing it for the sake of change or what? Um, so being, being able to have that background helps me to understand what I'm looking at. There's some kind of feedback going forward also.
Yeah, because I assume the gender identity being stricken isn't I A S B recommendation.
Yes, sir, yeah.
They were the ones that originally recommended putting it in, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, laws change that.
Well, and, and here's where this hair gets split, I still have to follow that language under federal, because that has not gone away under Title Seven and Title Nine. But under the state statutes and some federal statutes, I can't follow that, so. It, it'll be in some of our policies and it won't be in others, it's all gonna depend on where that policy lands under her, whose jurisdiction, and it's getting really ugly, to be honest.
So we really, it's mostly take I S Bs, you know, let's do a check off, make sure you got the right ones at the right places in that, so that's our guidance.
Any other questions? Is that it? Did you get through everything you wanted to get through, Leanne?
Yeah, unless there's other questions, um, the only other one is there is one uh board policy, which is our current three oh five point one, which is communication channels. That I A S B no longer recommends, however, Brian and I agree it should stay within our policies. But we're gonna be moving it to the five hundred series, so you'll see it when it comes up during the five hundred series.
And that policy, as you remember, is, if someone has a question, basically go to the lowest chain of command, so if there's a question, go to the teacher first, work yourself through that process, that's my.
Heather has it up, yeah?
Thank you, Heather.
All right, sounds good. So we have some more.
So we have some more time to review, uh, this, uh, three hundred series. So there's no motion tonight. Um, so we will move on to the June twenty twenty-five monthly financial reports.
Alright, our auditors from Bonsec and Frontfremel were here the week before last. Finishing up the field work for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five audit. We believe that it was another very clean audit, uh, performed by them. We, in our exit meeting that we had with them, they said that we are most likely gonna get. The goal of every audit, which is an unmodified opinion. So, um, looking forward to receiving that again. The field work is done. So now they go back to their office and they actually write up the report itself. Plus there, there's some parts of the report that I have to work on also. We likely will bring the final audit report to you probably in a October, late October. Or one of the November meetings. And then, and that will allow us to submit the audit, the, the comprehensive. Or the annual comprehensive financial report again to those two organizations that we submit it to each year to try to get the certificate of excellence. And financial reporting again from the associated of, Association of School Business Officials, international and. Um, to the Government Finance Officers Association. So that's the, kind of the timeline for that. Um, so in the board packet, you have the June monthly financial reports. I also in the board packet. If you wanna switch to that, maybe Heather, was a document that I just kind of summarized the highlights for each of the. District funds in the board packet. And I'm not gonna go through all of that tonight, cause it was in your board packet, but I'd take any questions if there's any questions on those highlights. Just a few of them, I'm gonna kind of summarize though. In our general fund, and all of this was favorable. The district's fund balance in the general fund during the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year increased by eleven point nine percent from the previous year. The cash balance in the general fund increased by ten point two percent from the previous year. And the difference between the cash balance and the fund balance is the cash balance, of course, is the money that's actually in the bank account. And the fund balance would be money that's in the bank account, plus accounts receivable, money that's owed to the school district from others. And subtracting out liabilities for accounts payable and things like that, money that the school district owes to. Very, various vendors at the end of the fiscal year. So that's the difference between cash balance and fund balance. Um, then the other key thing that we look at each year for a financial metric is our district's total unspent carryover. So that's the spending authority, which we were talking about earlier in the board meeting. That is not used at the end of a fiscal year, and you get to carry it over into future fiscal years. Our unspent carryover for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year also increased by nine point eight percent. From the previous year. So all of those are favorable trends, um, for those three, um, financial metrics. The other big one that we look at, of course, each year is solvency ratio, which your solvency ratio is calculated as your unassigned. Plus your assigned fund balance in your general fund divided by your total general fund revenue for the year. Our solvency ratio during the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year increased again by two point one seven percent. From twenty point two six percent at June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. To twenty-two point four three percent at June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. Now, you may recall when we were looking at setting our property tax levy rate this past spring. Because our solvency ratio was above twenty percent. We were not able to levy anything for the cash reserve levy in our general fund for the, the current fiscal year, the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So according to my projections, because of not being able to levy anything for cash reserve. We expect at the end of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year to our solvency, for our solvency ratio likely. To go back down below that twenty percent level because of not being able to levy for cash reserve. That's a common effect of not being able to levy for cash reserve. So just. That's what our projections are showing for next year. If we do go back down below twenty percent then. And for the next fiscal year, it would allow us to levy something for cash reserve again. It's a, just something that the state has in there to kind of monitor and make sure you don't build up too high of a fund balance in the general fund. And if your fund balance starts getting lower than you like it to be. You can levy for cash reserve is how that works. So again, uh, all of those, uh, financial metrics in the general fund were favorable though with the increases in those percentages. Um, just a couple other highlights I'm gonna point out. You know, our management fund, fund balance increased by about fifteen point nine percent. During the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. The main reasons for the increase in the management fund, fund balance is the district continued to attempt to levy enough management fund dollars. To fund expected significant increases like we've had the past few years for our property and liability insurance. Plus, um, we wanna, sure we have enough of a fund balance in the management fund. To pay for the other big expenditure that comes out of the management fund, which is our early retirement benefits that we pay to employees. We have another one now that we'll be bringing in, uh. Couple of years here.
Too soon, too soon.
So anyway, that's the, that's the, the main reason why we've been trying to increase the management fund, fund balance. Although there also has been talk at the state level about possibly trying to limit the amount. That your fund balance can be in the management fund. So we're keeping an eye on that and may have to, um. Look at if there's reasons that we might need to try de, to decrease that management fund level at some point in the future. If the state does implement some sort of limit there.
Our conversation there across legislators and with our other superintenses. Not to have a set percentage, but maybe a broad range. Because everybody's, every district has a different story as to why their management fund might be at a different level. So to come in and say it's one number. Would be very difficult, but maybe looking at a range. So we'll see where that goes. If this continues to be a conversation, legislation level, level this coming year.
Just a couple others I was gonna point out. Uh, the capital projects fund, you may have noticed. The sixty-three point seven percent decrease in the fund balance in the capital projects fund. And that, of course, is because we've been spending a lot of the bond proceeds from the last borrow that we did. To pay for, um, the payments that we've been making on the high school building addition. So that is nothing that was not expected, that decrease in the capital projects fund. And of course, um, we're still in the process of updating our five year capital projects plan. Will be contacting Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler and Company to look at potentially another borrow here in the near future. For, um, helping to pay for the Pleasant View project and the high school C T E addition. So. We'll be hearing more about that in the next couple of months or so. Um, nutrition fund, the fund balance, okay, in the nutrition fund, our, our sales for the year didn't end up. Um, decreasing from the previous year by about two percent, uh, which is about forty-six thousand dollars. But our fund balance in the nutrition fund did increase just barely by point six zero percent. During the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. We do still have a very healthy fund balance in our nutrition fund. Um, so that's pretty much the, the highlights, um, that I wanted to highlight tonight regarding the June two thousand twenty-five. Monthly financial reports. So take any questions if anybody has any questions about anything. Otherwise, just need a motion. Oh, and just a reminder, my plan is to present the July and August monthly financial reports at next board meeting then. And then that, that'll get us pretty much caught up with our normal schedule for presenting monthly financial reports. That's all I had unless there's any questions.
Would the board accept the monthly financial reports for June twenty twenty-five as presented?
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Wheeler, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for June twenty twenty-five as presented. Roll call vote please.
Yes. Director Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Director Kimmelshire?
Yes.
Director Ears?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, thank you, Mike. And moving on to superintendent retirement transition plan.
Yes. Um, first of all, thank you Molly for your very, 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 very kind words. Thank you, gracious.
I, I spoke on behalf of the entire board. I've spoken to many of them, uh, since your announcement and, uh. Everyone had the same sentiment that, uh, you know, it will be big shoes to fill. Um. We, uh, respect you and wish you the best, uh, but it is definitely bittersweet for us.
Yes, yes. Um, I talked to Molly about in your, I had sent all of you the, my letter. Uh, addressed to Molly as well as all of you. And just for the public, I'll just read that letter. So just bear with me. I promise I will not tear up. That'll be my ultimate goal. Anyone knows me, that may not be success, successful here. So I'm gonna get through this, but, uh, overall. As I write this letter, I'm filled with gratitude and pride. For thirty years, I've had the privilege of serving this district, beginning as a teacher and a coach. It has truly been the honor of a lifetime to de, dedicate my career to a place that means so much to me. When I look back, I see a career filled with opportunities I never could have imagined when I first stepped into the classroom. I am so appreciative of the trust that was placed in me, the doors that were open and the encouragement I received along the way. Those opportunities have shaped me and I hope in turn I have been able to shape a small part of what makes this district so special. What I'm most proud of is the work we have accomplished together. Our commitment to excellence has never wavered. Whether it's academics, the arts, or athletics, we always keep our focus where it belongs and that is on our students. Every decision, every initiative, every change we embrace was rooted in the belief that our students deserve the very best we can give them. I hold deep respect for those who came before me. Their vision laid the foundation of which we continue to build. I have equal respect for those who will lead this district into the future. Pleasant Valley has, has always been about people, staff, the students, the families, the community that surrounds us. I have no doubt that the tradition of excellence will continue long after I step away. I share this with you today because obviously I've made the decision to retire at the close of this year. It has truly been my honor to serve Pleasant Valley. I will always carry this district and the people with me. With that said, we have many great things to accomplish this year and I look forward to every moment and the difference we'll make together. Our commitment to students does not pause and together we will continue to focus on the learning, growth, and success of every child. Therefore, at the same time, we must also begin the process of selecting the next Pleasant Valley superintendent. That work is critical and I am confident we'll find someone who will carry on the values and the priorities that define this district. And I say that with all gratitude and respect for everything over the past thirty years. So. I did it. Which might be the first time. Um, and I shared the video that I sent out to all staff with all of you. Thanks to Heather for making that so wonderful as well. And I had made it to the end and I would say I had put on there, have a great day and always go Spartans. And I had the word always. I looked at her and it was like boom. Thanks to technology, we did a crop and that was taken out. So. So anyway, with that, um, tonight we just have a, you might ask why, you know, why now? Um, when you look at selecting a superintendent and the search that goes into it, it is a process. A process that all of you need to take very sincerely, um, very seriously and what this looks like and how you have that part of this role. Um, and then how myself, how Leanne and others can be a part of this process. So when you look at it, it really will take us, the way it's mapped out right now, and I'll say right now, because whichever search firm. Um, whichever search firm that we go with, um, they're gonna come with a recommendation of what that process look like, what that timeline looks like. So really, the temporary one that we have right now tentatively in there, you know, it'll take us to about. The end of February roughly before we would hire somebody and then you start the transition process. There are a few districts in the state already who have their positions posted for next year. But I think if we have this posted by, say, Thanksgiving, the first part of November, we'll be in front of it. And one search firm that I just had reached out to just get some ideas and thoughts. Um, they said if you can have it out there between Thanksgiving and winter break, it really allows people to start filling out the applications, get them turned in and that type of thing. So. Um, what I wanna share with you tonight, in your board packet. What you saw would be the request for proposal, which Leanne and I will walk you through. But if you look at that one, which I think also, you wanna pass those out, that'd be.
It's a two different date timelines. So this one may or may not stay the timeline depending on what decision is made tonight, but at least you'll have a, a summary.
Yeah.
The board's role and timelines.
So what I wanted tonight is really have you guys put your eyes on just the R F P in general. And get a feeling of you, what we would do is we have about seven, eight firms that we believe we could send this to. And give them some time to get an R F P back to us, their proposals, so that we can look at that from an interview standpoint. And then do you have the other one too, or did you just print off that one?
No, I have both of them.
The other one's you then.
So those two that we just handed out are the exact same document. They just have different dates at the bottom depending on what decision is made this evening.
I'll explain that to you.
Need to. Came from both directions.
Okay, so in your board packet right now, look at, let's start with the one that says the R F P on it. And then we'll kind of walk you through why the two that, um, the timelines that you see, let's go through those. But first of all, just look at the, on the screen where in your, or in your, where you wanna look at, about the introduction. It just basically describes who we are as a district. So whichever search firm this is sent to, they have an idea. Of who we are as a district. And why we have a search. So maybe what we'll do is we'll just go section by section. As we go through this and see if there's anything that we are missing, anything that you wanna add, any suggestions you might have. We can put that in there in the R F P itself.
Um, I would add that, uh, I did visit a little bit with, um, yeah, uh, Tammy. With I A, I A S B today. And she really, uh, you know, encouraged us to think. Think hard about, you know, what is really important to the board as we look for a superintendent, not. General, I mean, we're not looking for someone who's devoted to education. I mean, that's, you know, it's just like, let's really dig in. Um, she also said that, uh. Uh. It doesn't have to be super long. You know, just very, uh. Very, uh.
Molly, did she recommend that in the R F P or once we've selected the firm? Really digging into that with the firm and our requirements and recom, you know, recommendations for the superintendent? Cause the R F P is us requesting proposals from them.
It was, it was the R F P. She said, you know, what's really important, uh, what we give them. What's really important, uh, you know, less is more sometimes. And, um, we'll be very firm on our timeline, basically. So, sorry to interrupt.
Yep, that's totally good.
We can add a.
So look at the introduction. And if that looks good, look at the district profile, just kind of highlights who we are. And if there's anything else that you'd want to add, so in other words, if a search firm is looking at this information. Can they read this? Will they know a little bit about who we are, number of schools we have, that type of information?
So the district profile. I guess, when I'm thinking about like, when I look at, at ads for jobs and companies, there are certain factors I'm looking for in those companies. It's their opportunity to just come out and say how awesome they are. I'm asking the question, is that what this district profile is meant to do? And if so, it seems light. It seems not especially energetic. It seems kind of sterile. And I think.
I think.
We're so far ahead of other districts in the state frankly.
Right. The words I got was, don't wanna be too braggy.
Okay.
Right? So it's like, how do you brag without bragging?
We wanna wow. I mean, I feel like, you know, that's with, when we have, I guess.
We have the firm with us?
Yes, when we have the firm with us, they wanna, we wanna tout our excellence. Yes, when we have the firm with us, they wanna, they wanna tout our excellence.
When they post for the superintendent position, that's when the wow factor. Cause this is, again, just them giving us proposals for what their firm is gonna do for us.
They need to wow us.
They need to wow us, yeah.
And then we're wow them.
So, district profile, again, just kinda highlights a little bit about who we are. And then three, the scope of service really gets at to kinda what we're asking of them to give to us. And again, of the things we have listed here, they may come back with other things too, where they may come back and say, no, that's not normal or appropriate, I don't know. Take a look at that scope of service.
We talk about ten different RFPs, not just Iowa, some from Missouri, some were fifty pages long, some were one page, like, trying to find some best practices within these to, to get to this. But, always can add, always can change, expand.
Is the organizational change management part of the RFP, or something we're expected to lead and borrow from them? You know, you know what I'm talking about by organizational change management? Helping people make the transition from Brian to the next person, there's a whole like, so.
I was just thinking too about retention, current state, like with your announcement, should we be worried about any other announcements? Because, you know, that happens.
Yeah, I think when you look at, part of this would be the proposal requirements and the timeline, and then what happens after you.
So if you look under three and then you go to D and E, it talks about board support, and then it talks about transition and onboarding support. So, and, and that's on the RFP that really is in the board packet.
It is.
So they'll advise us on some of the organizational change management, kind of practice higher, but are you concerned about kinda between now and then as well? Yeah, so that's my biggest concern, is what happens between now and then with others.
Yeah, I think when you look.
Others within our district?
Yes, especially, you know, your direct reports, who I'm sure have a ton of respect for you and love working for you, and maybe wanna stick around for, to see what hap, you know what I mean? Like that happens at companies and it could happen, so.
It could, and I think then we look at.
How do we get ahead of that, if, if we need to get ahead of that?
And I would say phase six, which is really that March through July timeframe, there's a lot of the onboarding and what that looks like, the transition process. But in the meantime, you know, what's, what's my involvement and input into the whole process? Yeah.
And then also, the school administrators of Iowa, assigned on that floor, is that correct?
They will, yes.
So, there's that.
When they start the new job, yes, July first.
Yeah.
Yeah, they will have to do that.
Okay.
Under the, the scope of services in B, where it's talking about the stakeholder engagement, is that kind of surveying that they're doing to inform the job description, the search, the interview process, all of it, like what specifically is that for?
So I think that'd be interesting when they come back to us. What you will see is sometimes you'll have search firms that will come in and say, you know, what are you looking for? Give us what you're needing, or if you'd like to see the next superintendent. So they usually build that in, in that early phase of there, when they, once we hire a search firm, they'll start doing some of those, whether it's a survey or of a community or needs assessment.
Roundtables with different groups, depending on the firm.
And they may come back and say, no, you don't have to do that, I, I don't know, but that's not uncommon, I don't know what it'll look like though.
Yeah, I was just curious what that information is then used for? If it's, if it's for all of it, the whole process, that it's informing how we form the job description, how we form the interview guiding, how we're developing the candidate profile.
Yes, to all of them.
All of that.
And how they're out searching for people to find the right fit.
They're using it as kind of their criteria. Will we get to see that feedback from the community as well?
I would assume so. I mean, I think you guys will be actively involved.
Part of what we've asked for here, the second bullet, is a summary of the stakeholder feedback, that they would be able to present to the board to say, here's, here's the themes that we saw from each groups, here's the top three, whatever those things are, that they would be able to bring back to you guys to say, here's what our stakeholders, does this align with what the board, right? Because there's still, you guys still have a big, big voice in all of this, you know, so, does, do we align across all?
So we can, we can say we want what stakeholders they want, we want them to talk to, we can suggest questions that we want them to ask. We have a lot of flexibility within that.
When we're back to this other document, number three, the key considerations for choosing a search firm, I assume it's kind of hidden within experience and track record, but I'll be really curious to make sure that we're getting information on their retention rates of the candidates they're placing and, you know, cause I, I assume we can all agree that when we hire the next person, we want them to be here for thirty, you know, thirty years, right? Like, we want them to be here a really long time, we don't want somebody that's just gonna come in, that we're gonna train and invest, and they're gonna leave in two years, three years, so.
And part of the RFP is we do ask for references, and those references have to be placements within the last five years. If you place somebody fifteen years ago, that really isn't gonna do a whole lot of good for us, so, we do have that five-year window. And being able, if you look at the second document that I handed out, when you see on the third page, the list of the firms that we was gonna send the RFP to, I was able to find communities or districts within Iowa that they have placed in already within the last five years. So we very easily could start looking at retention and different things from that perspective to see, you know, how their placements have worked out in the communities that they place them.
So some of what you see underneath what we're looking at, with the one with the firms that went and handed out tonight, there's a lot of similarity to the actual RFP, but it just kinda guides who we're sending it to, what we're looking for, and then the timeline. Now, so let me give you a little bit on timeline, a couple of things to think about would be, today is the twenty-second of September. If we were to say tonight, yes, we think the RFP looks good, we could start sending that out already this, later this week, or you know, Heather is gonna put like a cover page to it, so it has pictures and some of those things that we'll send out to the, the people. And then we'd put a date where we probably give them about, we're gonna have to two weeks tops, so it's a pretty tight window of time. If that is the case, we could come back to our next board meeting, which is October thirteenth, and we could review, let's say there's eight and all eight sort of back in. We wanna select maybe three of those that we want to actually bring in for an interview process to identify as a board, which three we want to do the actual interview with us, and then we'd select one from that group of three. So the question is, you know, what does that timeline look like? And something to think about, so it's September twenty-second, October thirteenth, the next one, we could review the applicants and select three firms. So, our next board meeting is October twenty-seventh. In seven years, I might have to miss my first board meeting. Debbie probably won't let me come, but cause I have a shoulder replacement taking place on the twenty-fourth. So I don't know if I'm gonna make it back by that Monday night.
Or on drugs.
I'm gonna be gone on the twenty-seventh also, actually, for work.
So, one thought is, do we cancel that meeting, do we keep that meeting, what does that look like? It's on that Monday, we don't have school. But one option we could do, a couple of things to think about is that we could then either push, we could do interviews on November, if we don't have the board meeting on the twenty-four, twenty-seventh, we could use November tenth as the interview time to interview three. Or do we hold a special meeting where all that is on that agenda is an open meeting, but we find a time to bring the three firms in, and we interview them in a special meeting, and then that keeps the process moving forward? So that by November tenth, you know, we are ready, they're coming to us, and whoever we selected, they're coming November tenth and saying, here we go, here's what we recommend, here's what the next steps are, so it keeps it moving forward.
And that is a special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I would too.
So that'd be an option.
After the twenty-seventh.
So, if that's a thought, we could put the, a plan together, a timeline with that in mind. And then we could find a time where we all can get together for a special meeting, bring them in, whether it's a five o'clock or four o'clock, we could figure out what that looks like in our schedules, keep that moving forward. So, really, bless you, October thirteenth, our next one, we would be looking at the applicants of the whoever turns them in, to select three. And then we decide, let's have a special meeting sometime maybe before the twenty-seventh. So you actually do the interviews, and then we could select a firm after we're done doing interviews.
So you would say before the twenty-seventh of October?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and then we tell that firm, you're coming back to us on November twenty-fourth, or no, sorry, November tenth. They'd be coming back to us, whoever that firm is we select to keep the process moving forward.
Would you like the idea of a special meeting? I do feel like we need to move things as quickly as possible, based on most of the means in the state of Iowa and other school districts. I mean, it's just, get a better position.
Yeah.
Be ahead of the game.
Yes.
There'd be any thoughts you have on that, in terms of we just, we'd advertise it, we'd post it, one agenda item? Or we'd start out with our normal open meeting type thing, but then we just go into that, one agenda item. Our new business. On the twenty-seventh, cancel that one, looks like, that'd be an option.
I think we could put that in our minutes tonight, just because it's only.
Can we set the special board meeting date tonight?
I think we could.
I mean, we're gonna give them the deadline for proposals, so if the ones who want to submit, they have a deadline. If they didn't by the deadline, and our special meeting is that day or the day after, then they just don't get considered for selection as the firm, so, yeah.
Let's just pull up our calendars real quick, if you look at, September twenty-second is tonight, if we had our normal meeting on the thirteenth, oh, sorry, let's go back a second, let's say we post the RFP this week, let's say Wednesday. We give them until October third or October sixth, to get those turned in to us. So then we'd have from October sixth to the thirteenth, that gives us one week to get it all put together. On the thirteenth, we are reviewing them, to select whatever number, like three, whatever we decide that to be. And then we would see, maybe they could do the interviews, maybe it's October twentieth, that next Monday, we have a special meeting, and then they would come in and do their presentation to us. On the twentieth.
Do you think that's, gives them enough time on the twentieth, or do we want to go like the twenty-second, or?
No, I mean, these firms should have a very consistent format that they're gonna be sending us, this is their whole, this is what they do, yeah.
Basically, I'm just trying to understand the structure, basically, these firms would come in and basically present to us.
So, of the ones that we have listed here, we will send the RFP to all of them. Then, they have a deadline, once we have that, Ryan and I would bring that to the board for review, to narrow it down to three firms, that we would then contact to come in for that interview process. Based off that interview process, the board would then select the firm that they want to go for with, who is going to be the, the firm to move forward with.
So on that October thirteenth board meeting, we would have information ahead of time on the RFPs. So we would come into that meeting and hopefully easily narrow it down to three.
Correct, yes.
Sounds good.
And then the twentieth, if we do a special meeting, we'd interview, select the person, then they would come to us on November tenth, starting the process.
So we're moving that back from November third, because we originally had November third?
Yeah, November, yeah, November tenth. Yeah, that'd be our board meeting that we would have. Debbie, you have all that?
So Molly, knowing that you want to add section or additional information to the RFP, I would like me to gather what that is, so that I can then transition it into the RFP. So you said they told you to be very, very, very specific on what it is that you guys are looking for in the RFP. So that's not laid out here currently, this is more, what are you gonna, here's what we need you to give us, so.
This is what they need to give us, so we can decide if we wanna work with them, not necessarily.
And that's why I asked if that information needed to be in the RFP, or if that was once we've selected the firm, where our criteria comes in to what we're looking for.
Can we ask Tammy if she can give us an example of one that she's seen that was good, or?
Yeah, actually, um. She said we could go on Pella's or Mount Pleasant School District's websites, and we can, it's all public.
Who was the second one, Mount?
Um, Mount Pleasant, okay.
So they maybe had added something to their, this RFP document, maybe under district profile or scope of services, maybe they just added something that highlighted some of those factors.
This is, this is, that was what, I think we'd have to go to like Pella's school board minutes.
I can take a, I can take a look at that tomorrow, and then see, compare the two, and then put something here to send to the board before we release the RFP on Wednesday.
That sounds great, yeah.
Yeah, cause I'd assume you would want, all of us probably have a top three, four, or five competencies, or, you know, things that are important to all of us, but how do we narrow that down into a more structured list, yeah?
So I'll see what their best practice was, and then something, also sharing with you what theirs is, so you can kinda see, and then get the feedback from you guys, and then.
Can you see that on there anywhere?
I'm looking, if I find it, I'll send it out.
Cause the only thing I don't want us to do is make a lot of changes, and then send it out to you to get feedback, or to give us an approval, because then we'd be in trouble with, we'll get in trouble with open meeting laws, so we almost gotta decide like tonight, here's what it looks like.
I, I guess, you know, if the, if the board is comfortable with what we already have laid out.
Maybe we just add something very specific, based on feedback we've gathered, Molly, to, to the job description, or the, like, we used to call them success profiles, which would be the document that an external candidate would get from a search firm.
Right.
That highlighted the specifics of the job, but not just the duties, but like the competencies and the experiences, and the different things that you want the candidate to, to see before they apply.
So that'd be what we had the search firm send out.
Right, we would help, we would help them draft it though.
Correct.
Yes.
Once we've selected the firm.
This is just to get a company to select.
I'm saying we, what Molly is suggesting, we do that later in the process with the firm that's picked.
Correct.
Right.
In some sort of a job description, candidate profile, whatever the company calls it, the document that they use.
So this, are we good with what's on this, to be sent out?
A generic RFP.
So I actually have a question about the success criteria, I was waiting for the date stuff to settle out. What does a successful search look like? It's one of our like selection criteria, I don't know what that means, does it mean somebody got hired? That's a hundred percent for all of them?
Uh, it's not a hundred percent for all of them, sometimes they cannot come to a consensus, and that's when they place an interim superintendent. For example, I believe Johnston had done that. They, they had their assistant superintendent serve as interim for a year, and.
Because the search firm couldn't produce a candidate that the board unanimously agreed to hire?
I don't know what the specifics were, I remember Tony Hyatt was one of the finalists. Tony Hyatt was one of the finalists the following year, and they ended up going with the interim superintendent. So it might just have been that they did not get full board consensus. I think it's really important for us to think about as we bring a new superintendent in. That that individual feels like they have the support of the entire board. Um, we only need majority vote, correct, Debbie, uh, as far as hiring a superintendent, however, um. You know, it's, uh, I think it's important that we all have consensus for the individual.
Well, the reason I ask the question is, when I think about how it would go with hiring manager. If I can get HR to cast my net all over the internet, and it's in front of, you know, every developer in the country. The pool of applicants I'm gonna get's gonna be awesome, and I'll be able to filter down to even the best of the best, right? But if the search firm's gonna put it out to three locations, they're still gonna come back to us with candidates, of course. But they may not be as good candidates as they could be otherwise, the question really asking is like, how do we evaluate this success criteria for these firms, like?
So if.
We're gonna interview three and I need to know.
If you come back and give us their presentation, they're gonna tell us, here are our tactics and strategies. And so then we can, you know, shoot holes in their tactics and strategies and question that they are doing a nation, you know, nationwide search, or. How are you gonna market this job, what resources do you have to help you market this job? Um, we'll be able to push them on that when they come and present to us, to make sure that we're comfortable with it.
And Doug, if you look at the document that I handed tonight that has the search firms listed on here, um, I put a strengths column. Um, this tells you, are they a national, are they Midwest, are they Iowa specific? Um, and then the examples of where they have placed superintendents, you can see, are they all Iowa, are they Midwest, do they? So that gives you just a baseline as they're submitting their RFPs as to what information I found about what their reach is. That hopefully can help you also draw from once, once we've.
Be good to know. How far and wide the candidates who got placed came from relative to where they ended up, because it would tell us how far and wide they're stretching that net, right?
Do you feel like we'd get a lot of out of state candidates?
It's a hard, that's a really good question, as, as I was processing right now, I can think of like, um, I'll take Des Moines. You know, Des Moines' uh, current superintendent came from outside Pittsburgh, when he transitioned here, that's about three, four years ago. I think a lot of what you will see is probably neighboring states typically. If someone's coming from an out of state from a distance, there's probably a reason why started their career in the area, have family in the area. But a lot of times I typically see a lot of Iowas, probably Iowa type people. But not accommodate the states circling us.
If, if the board would like, we could add as part of the RFP, we're asking for referrals. We could ask for placements on whether they were local, regional, or national, and then that would give you an idea also of. What that reach is without having to give very specific details.
Yeah, that'd be okay, I'm thinking about what you just said, and now I'm like, thinking almost the opposite, well, if they placed in somebody local. Does that mean like they actually didn't reach the regional folks, that it was somebody far away, who didn't reach the right, so, I don't know. So many ways I guess you could, that's why I'm like, maybe not, it is a terrible idea.
I mean, you can ask for any information you want, how you use it in the future.
It's something to ask when they come in, yeah.
That'd be okay, yeah.
Uh, there are a lot of, uh, on the IASB website, there are some, you know, I'll send this information out, but. There's a lot of, uh, helpful guides on there as far as questions to ask, things to think about, um, that type of thing.
One of the firms here is the IASB Executive Searches, they do have a s- a section or service through them that, that does, um, superintendent placements as well.
Yeah, I, I believe also at the annual convention, there's a little workshop.
And there usually is, uh.
Superintendent searches.
I've always blown those off.
Sort of went to that last year.
You're all funny. Okay, so, alright. Why don't we, yeah, let's, let's do a couple of things, go ahead.
So if, I guess, review this, if there's anything that sticks, or I'm sorry, review what the RFP that Brian and you had put together, and. If there's anything that sticks out that you feel really needs to be changed, please email Brian.
And let's do that by.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
I close the business tomorrow, sounds good.
Okay, alright.
Go ahead, sorry.
Nope, that's perfect, then we'll get it pushed out by the Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, yep.
And then again, the document that I handed out tonight, that is a living, breathing document, it was really intended just to give us kind of a path forward and a guide. Um, and as we select an RFP firm, guaranteeing that will change, right, but just. Just kind of a how is this process gonna work, how involved is the board gonna be, and, and just kind of lining that up for you guys.
I would encourage you to go on the websites of the, uh, of the search firms. You can see what schools already have, like Heather pulled up, um, the, uh. Um, Grundmeier and, uh, the school was Pella. Um, you can see all their information and what, what the search firm puts out right there. And, uh, you can see what schools they're currently working with. Um, it's very interesting to just go in and see all the details of the different schools and how the search firm is marketing them currently. It's just, but I mean, all these search firms have links to the different positions, so.
Maybe we'll, we'll even see if we can put our rubric together or something, so when we start looking at the search firms. Which ones, which ones we wanna bring in as well, we'll see what we can put together for you guys. To help with the success.
Yeah.
So we're all looking kinda the same thing.
Uh, something else that you'll see on, on those is those other districts timelines, so you can see when they're interviewing, and that might, you know. Make us wanna move our schedule a little bit, we're up to.
Ryan, is there a certain search firm like that was around back when you came in the role that you used back then?
You know, so we've only used, uh, a search firm once before, and that was kind of a pseudo for, we, remember guys, we used Grundmeier's earlier. When we had the Director of Secondary Ed come open. And what we did there is we just, they went out, we gave them what we're looking for, they went out and tried to find people and just gave us names. And then we did all the process after that, so it really wasn't a full blown search, it was just them helping us try to attract people. So. Yeah, we just haven't done it before.
So we hired Brian since he was assistant, we didn't have to go through that.
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't want names or anything, do we have people within the district that would meet the qualifications that we'd be looking for?
I think we have four people right now that would have their. No one has their doctorate for the superintendence, but they have their EDS, which is their Ed Specialist Degree, which gives you the certificate to be superintendent.
You said we have four.
I don't know where, I think I know all of them.
Yeah, we should definitely, I'll make sure we've looked at the job description too, did you send that to us already? The qualifications, you know, like I don't even know what all the specific qualifications are other than the degrees, but.
Yeah. Superintendence Licensor is the one that they have to have, and you can get that through either your EDS or your doctorate.
Being, uh, you know, what are the different jobs you should have checked off in your career to get you ready for this?
Yeah.
You know, getting some of that background from you and be helpful.
Yeah, we'll do all that.
Um, and it is part of, uh, the advantage of working with a search firm is we can put the task on them to make sure that, uh. Who we hire has all their updated licenses and credentials, because. There has been recently schools that have hired a superintendent and find out they do not have the credentials they need. Recently, so, uh, we need to make sure that a, a search firm will take responsibility for that. You know, when, when a superintendent submits an application, there's probably fifty pages of stuff that goes with it. That is why we hire a search firm, because unless we want to go through that, so.
Yes, we need to make a motion for that tonight. So, I don't know.
I wanna ask Mike. Would you like, we're gonna be approval of those on the twentieth, should we do a very short general meeting to get this out of the way, or do you feel that? Leaning until the following board meeting?
I, I think it'd be okay to wait till the following board.
No, I think, I may just.
Our policy.
Talking about October twentieth, do I be, or? I'm not gonna be here that better.
On the twentieth?
That takes care of that one.
Oh, okay, so it's just the second one?
Give you one second to look up our, our calendar.
Yeah, Adrian made me have to dig into IASB to understand, I was like, I don't.
Do you have it handy, oh, is it getting close? No, I mean, right now, the only thing we have on there is. If we did two year and five year follow up surveys. If we didn't do those, no, so we'd be, right now, I mean, there's nothing pressing that we'd have to have on the twentieth, would be good.
Okay, so we would just do the.
So is the motion to move the meeting from the twenty seventh to the twentieth?
Yeah, that's it, we're doing, yep. Do we still like, does that, is our normal six o'clock time work, or do you wanna move it to five o'clock? Or we can keep it six, so people know.
How long did each firm get to present, that would be?
Yeah, I'd say we move it to five.
I'd say we move it to five, if, if we can make it work.
But it's an hour, but.
Five on the twentieth.
With that, Jameson, five o'clock on the twentieth and seven six o'clock.
Twenty, right, yeah, twentieth.
Good with that, Catherine?
Are you there at five o'clock?
Go to five o'clock on the twentieth?
Sure.
Um, I will take a motion to move.
I move the board, we move the board meeting from October twenty seventh to October twentieth with a five PM start. Or a special meeting? Does it need to be called that?
Really would be a special meeting, then it would just be.
Regular board meeting?
Transitioning, yeah. Yeah, cause isn't that, yeah.
Give it a second. All right, motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Conkle. That October twenty seventh regular board meeting at six PM be moved to October twentieth at five PM. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Ms. Camisher?
Yes.
And Ayers?
Mrs. Blackman?
Yes.
Alright, thank you everybody for your time today, appreciate them.
Okay, great.
Do we need to do anything for the meeting on the thirteenth to review the proposals?
Nope, we're good. Nope, I think that's it, yeah, all good, thank you.
Alright, we are not excited to replace you, we're excited to get the process going.
There you go.
Okay, uh, so for future dates, we have October thirteenth at six PM regular board meeting, and then we have October twentieth at five PM. Regular board meeting.